I call to order the Waverly City Council for July tenth, two thousand and seventeen. Let us rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in all forms.
Aiden. Tonight's prayer will be given by Father David Ambrosi from Saint Mary's, very important parish, and come right to that mic, and thank you for being with us.
Thank you. Let us give praise to God who is rich in mercy and who has favored us in wonderful ways. Blessed be God forever. Saint Paul urges us to give thanks to God always through Christ, for in him God has given us everything. And so now we listen to the words of the Apostle Paul to the Philippians. Rejoice in the Lord always. I shall say it again, rejoice. Your kindness shall be known to all. The Lord is near. Have no anxiety at all, but in everything by prayer and petition with thanksgiving, make your request known to God. Then the peace of God that surpasses all understanding will guard your hearts and minds in Christ Jesus. The word of the Lord.
Amen.
So let's take a moment of quiet prayer. As we gather all of our prayers together in the words that Jesus taught us, we pray: Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, now and forever. Let us pray. Almighty Father, you are lavish in bestowing all your gifts upon us, and we give you thanks for the favors you have given to us all as your family, as your... In your goodness, you have favored us and kept us safe in the past. We ask that you continue to protect us and shelter us in the shadow of your wings. Bless this city council meeting and all the people they represent in this city, and may God be with us and bless us always. Amen.
Thank you. Thank Father Dave for coming and welcoming you to the community. He is new at Saint Mary's for...
Thank you. I start tomorrow.
And as a good parishioner there, right? Very good. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as distributed by our city clerk, Carla Guyer?
Move approval.
Your second.
Second.
Motion seconded. Council discussion. All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no, becomes our approved agenda. Is there a motion to approve the June fifth and June nineteenth minutes also as distributed and printed by our city clerk? So move second, please. Council discussion. All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no, this becomes our approved minutes. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on our two thousand and seventeen sidewalk repairs, specs, contract, and estimated costs. City clerk, do we have any written comments on this one?
No, sir, your honor.
Then I would open it up to oral public comments on our sidewalk repairs two thousand and seventeen. Likely means perfectly done. I close the hearing. A motion be in order?
I'll move Resolution seventeen eighty-five, a resolution awarding contract for citywide sidewalk repairs two thousand and seventeen project to Feldman Concrete of Darielsville, Iowa for the bid amount ninety-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars and fifty cents.
I think we have to do eighty-four first.
Yeah, let's...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let's get...
I will move Resolution seventeen eighty-five, a resolution awarding contract...
Eighty-four.
I'm sorry.
Eighty-four is above it.
Why don't you guys go ahead if you've got it?
Move Resolution seventeen eighty-four, resolution approving plan specifications form of contract, and estimated cost of one hundred and thirty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars for the citywide sidewalk repairs two thousand and seventeen project.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Kangas.
Yes.
Lampy.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Mesencheck.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Walzstein.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Resolution seventeen eighty-five is unanimously approved. This time we'll entertain any public comments on anything not on tonight's agenda?
My name is George Miller.
George, to the mic, yeah. You can even pick it up if you need to.
My name is George Miller, and Colleen and I own the property at thirteen oh five West Bremer. That's adjacent to the construction site on the west end of town. I come to you tonight because we have a problem with the contractor, and I've talked to several people. I've talked to Paula Stevenson, Travis Travler, Mike Stevens, and Roy Gellhaus from Mason City. The problem that I have is shortly after they began construction on that end of town, they put up this road closed sign at our driveway that leads into that short frontage road, which I didn't think was any big deal, but as a result of that, they didn't cover anything but the driveway. So the somebody, I don't know if the public, contractor, or whom, began a new driveway off of my parking lot across the grass parking and across the curb. At this point, and I complained, that's when I complained to these, to Mike, Paula, and Travis, that they're going to a contractor meeting, and I says, why don't you mention the contractor? I don't care if they use the driveway, just shut off what's not the driveway. And the contractor came in and put a few things across there, including that plastic fence, which soon disappeared again. And I, again, I don't know who put the barricades up, I don't know who took them down, all I got is the residue of the problem. But anyway, currently, there's a, there's no barrier there, there is now, but there wasn't a barrier there, and the ruts had developed in this area here to be well over a foot deep. I think that pretty much takes care of the car traffic, because I think they'd get hung up, but there's still apparently some truck traffic and others across there because it's still getting deeper. And it was also a situation with the residence to the west of me. He put up a barrier because the public was cutting across his when that little driveway, adjutant driveway was made. So anyway, a couple of weeks ago, I complained, and that's when they put something across there. I think they at one time had a gas pipe strung across there, they put this plastic fence across there, and subsequent to that, it's all disappeared again. I again called Mike's office and was told that it's not a city project, and because of that, he didn't really have any, they didn't think he had any influence or any reason to get involved. So that's when I called Roy Gellhaus in Mason City. He indicated he had some interest in the project. I have no idea who he is, but anyway, he said he would contact the necessary individual in Waverly and get it fixed. Apparently, nobody can find that individual because it stays the same, except for, that was last week, subsequent to that, they took out the barricade between the dead end street and the street. So now they got two accesses off our parking lot, across the driveway that they've made new, which, this is a picture of that filled up with water last night, and that water is undermining my asphalt parking lot. Soon that's going to break away, and somebody's going to be responsible. I would hold the person that put the barricade up, but I don't know who that is, and no one sees it, to advise me to that. So I have to assume it's either the city or the contractor. I sought some direction from the legal counsel, and he suggested that I take hands in our control, put up a barricade so it doesn't get worse, and then we seek either an injunction or something in the nature of that to shut down the contractor in the next thirty days, because he said it takes thirty days, but thirty days from now, that would be atrocious. So, and this is a picture of the dead end sign at the end of that frontage road to the north, and now they've established that to be a new driveway also. That cuts through, they filled in the gutter that the water is supposed to run across and drain that south side of the street, so instead of that now, that drains across my parking lot also. It goes right there. It builds up, flows in the parking lot, and it runs out into the street through my normal driveway. I, I'm approaching the city looking for some relief. I don't have any authority of any sort. The original driveway still remains closed with significant barricade, and my counsel indicates that I should put up a barricade, and then we'll start legal proceedings as to get this resolved. So we put those three concrete barriers across there. It's going to be very difficult now for a truck to get across there. Like I say, I don't think a car can, because I think it would gotten hung up. I don't, it makes no sense to me. I offered to use the driveway. I said, take the barricade down so they can use what's prepared for traffic, instead of diverting it to mudslides. And like I say, nothing's happened as a result of it. As far as the city not having any involvement with it, I think that's pretty bogus. You've got millions of dollars of skin in this project. I shouldn't have anything in this project other than my tax money, but I've got an hour for two people of time, effort, and energy to move those barricades. Somebody's got to repair that area, reseed it, and hard to tell what's going to happen to my parking lot and both those spots that they are driving across. So I don't know what action the city council wants to take or anybody. I'm just advising you that the clock is now ticking, and somebody is going to be paying damages, because I shouldn't have any investment in this project at all.
Thank you, George.
I'll take care of it, sir.
We'll leave that with James. Thank you. Any other public comments on any agenda items? Harland Platy?
Yeah, my name is Harland Platy, and I've lived here in Waverly all my life, except during World War II. I was in the Marines in the Battle of Okinawa, and after the war, I went to vet school and played basketball at Iowa State. My wife and I live at three oh nine Fifth Avenue Southwest. As we understand it, the council is now considering just a pedestrian bridge to replace the Green Bridge. This would be one of the biggest mistakes a Waverly City Council ever made. Our forefathers had the wisdom to connect the two sides of Waverly with two vehicular bridges with a pedestrian sidewalk. Then the town was populated with maybe only two thousand people. Now we have eleven to twelve thousand people and growing, and we think we can just get by with one bridge. This is not common sense. I have not talked to anyone who was in favor of a pedestrian bridge. They favor a new two-lane bridge with pedestrian sidewalk. With state aid, it could be built for a reasonable price. Perhaps there should have been an election on the bridge issue, so that the citizens could have voted, instead of a few people in southeast Waverly, along with Councilman Lampy, seemed to be calling the shots for this pedestrian bridge, and the rest of the Waverly people don't seem to have too much to say about it. I just don't understand why a few people should have the say-so over something as important as this bridge. Okay, I also want to address the raising of the Seventh Avenue Southeast Road for flood control. The city proposes to raise Seventh Avenue Southeast. A few years ago, the city raised the road by Southeast School because of the big dip in the water going through there, and you couldn't drive through there. Well, they raised the road, it became dammed up, and the backup water caused increased flooding for the people in the area. They protested, and the city had to tear the road down. When the river floods at the bend south of the dam, the water takes a path through the woods and goes to Seventh Avenue Southeast, crosses Seventh Avenue Southeast, and goes east past Southeast School. Well, I got, did I mention that the, they had to tear that bridge down by the school? A couple of years ago, the city tried to sandbag Seventh Avenue Southeast, but the stream went around it and down its usual path, which is a natural way when, when we have flooding, then that water goes over Seventh Avenue, and it goes around kind of through the park, and then comes, goes by Southeast School. Now the city is planning on raising the road at Seventh Avenue Southeast. If this happens, and it causes a dam to develop, and the water backs up, it will fill up the new dry run and cause it to overflow and greatly increase the flooding to southwest Waverly. In September two thousand and sixteen, when we had flooding, the dry run between Second Street Southwest and Third Street Southwest at Fifth Avenue Southwest, it got real full, and people down there now just call it the holding pond. But if, if we have a, if that water dams up by Seventh Avenue Southeast, it is greatly going to increase the flooding. There's going to be a lot of backwater from that dam that will go into southwest Waverly and increase the flooding greatly. So I wonder, if the council considers this Seventh Avenue road, raising the road, can Mr. Cherry guarantee to the council and to the people in southwest Waverly that this will not dam up and cause backwater to increase the flooding in southwest Waverly?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do listen, and we thank you for coming out and taking time to make your views known. Any other public comments on any items not on tonight's agenda? Sharon, you can, if you'd like. There was also mentioned here, I think, but go ahead.
Yes, Sharon Cashman from Waverly, Iowa. I just wanted to tell you a couple of things. I really look for the vision, what the vision of Waverly is regarding the bridge. Our, your website states, "A high quality of life, a friendly, progressive merchants, and the college town atmosphere." This is Waverly. And I see the pedestrian bridge as a real plus to that in promoting a nice, calm, peaceful area. We've lived without that bridge for a couple of years, and yes, that was my shortcut across town, and I see it as a nice area to go to. So really think of our community, think of our vision, walkability, safety. That's something I just want to really remind people of. Thank you.
Thank you. I think since this will be an agenda item, any more comments on the Green Bridge can be held off, please. Any other comments by the public on any items not on tonight's agenda? Thank you. And we now have on our consent calendar, six items. They are a pay request from Baker Concrete for golf course pond work. We have a bill from Midwest Concrete for pedragg, ramp work. We have a bill from Beacher Field Walker Morris Hoffman &amp; Johnson for the land acquisition at the airport. We have Stanley Consultants' bill to pay for the Parkway East. We have McClure Engineering Bill to pay for Twentieth Street work, and we have a liquor license for Sash, Quats, Jacks, Hideaway Bar Room and Grill. Did I get that right, gentlemen? Close enough. We'll find out more. Something to do with fainting goat, right? Is there a motion, please?
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no. Consent calendar is unanimously approved, and we thank the two new owners of the Hideaway Bar and Grill for being with us, and it's forward to your contributions to the city of Waverly. Regular business item number one is a feasibility service...
Go ahead.
No, just kidding.
Regular business item number one is a feasibility service agreement for the Third Street Bridge. A motion, please.
Move Resolution seventeen eighty-six, resolution approving professional services agreement with WHKS and Company of Mason City, Iowa for the Third Street Bridge Southeast Pedestrian Bridge Replacement Feasibility Study for estimated fee of thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion seconded. Council discussion.
I guess I've just got a couple of questions. Reading the information, it indicates that we're going to look at both styles of bridge. I'm just wondering if we're also looking at both a ten-foot width, which I understand to be the traditional footbridge, and a twelve-foot wide that would support vehicle traffic, and also if we're going to look at the difference between the five-ton rating that's necessary for pedestrian and a ten-ton rating that would allow some vehicles to
Yes, quick answer. So all that is...
Casey, identify yours.
Yeah, Casey Faber, WHKS. Yes to Dan's answer. So we're going to look at ten and twelve foot for both steel truss and the pre-stress concrete beam, and then we're looking at H-ten versus H-five for all four of those options then, so.
Thank you.
And, and what kind of vehicular would it support then?
So H-ten is a, is a five-ton vehicle, and so it's a ten KIP vehicle. It's, it's just a small straight truck, a pickup truck type of a load. An H-ten is more of a box truck, a small box truck type load, two axles. So we can look at...
So we're going to look at 10 and 12-foot for both steel truss and the pre-stress concrete beam, and then we're looking at H-10 versus H-5 for all four of those options then, so...
Thank you.
And what kind of vehicular would it support, then?
So H-10 is a five-ton vehicle, and so it's a 10 KIP vehicle. It's just a small straight truck, a pickup truck type of a load. An H-10 is more of a box truck, a small box truck type load, two axles. So we can look at, I kind of mentioned last time, and Mike caught it, and we talked about it the next day a little bit. The pre-stress beam bridges are standard pre-stress beams, so we can kind of look at what would be required if there's additional load to one of those bridges that would really be at no cost because that beam is already a standard DOT design for full legal traffic. So we'll include that in the report, kind of a commentary, but we're not looking at that as an option, per se. Does that make sense, Edith?
Uh huh. But the widest, the widest width would be 12 feet.
That's the widest width that we were talking about.
That you're looking at right now.
That we're looking at right here, yep.
Just being clear on that this is, we approved this, this is getting them to work and digging in on the details of this.
That's correct. A full feasibility study outlining all the options that have been talked about, the price estimates of that, and then a presentation will follow once that's completed.
Yep. Displays, if you remember, we had an open forum before a council meeting back for the original update to those feasibility studies where we looked at something like 18 different options of vehicular and different alignments and everything. So it'd be similar to that. We'll have displays outlining what these things would look like. I think, you know, Tim was the one that was asking specifically about steel railings that might be reminiscent of a truss, you know, so we'll have examples of what that could look like, examples of what form liner might look like, similar to, it's been used on the culverts that were put in on the Dry Run Creek. They can do a lot of things with forming and staining concrete to make it look similar to, you know, natural stone or something. I think we've already got some work going on on the Cedar River Parkway Bridge, so we could kind of tie that together. It's been something that we've thrown around a little bit ahead of actual work here, but those are the kind of things that we're thinking about, and we'll have examples of on those displays with the report.
So you're going to have like four options, is that what you're saying?
Well, yeah, and...
I mean...
Two bridge types and then variations in width and variations in truck types. You kind of, you start to get a tree, there's probably more than that, but some of those costs would just be replacement. This is what it would cost. This is what it would additionally cost with a steel rail or with a concrete form liner rail, you know, so there's probably four main options, two types with two widths.
Yeah, some base structure, then some à la carte type thing.
Yep, yep. We'll kind of set up a matrix, and this is what it would cost additionally to go to this load, this is what it would cost additionally to go to this aesthetic treatment. You know, we're talking about weathering steel versus paint on the truss side, so we'll kind of have those options broken down in a matrix.
Emmett, sorry, Tim, go ahead.
So we're looking at basically timeline we've got here, you're going to be back next month.
Yep.
For the public hearing or public open house on this, and then coming back then again in September with actual...
With a contract for a decision, I think is...
If you go to the bottom of the project schedule here, it's, there's going to be city staff review August 7th, but then the open house is the 21st.
Okay, mine just had the 21st.
This is as aggressive a schedule as you can do, or is that...
With the meetings as they are, yeah, this is, to get it before city staff to take a look before we present to public, yes.
And I guess I would say, I mean, I just want to, for the public's sake, because I've gotten, I mean, almost, people have contacted me, citizens, have been very few in number in support of pedestrian. Many, many more, the vast, vast majority, and I don't know if any of you have looked at the KWay page where over 100 people are commenting, it's almost everybody is not in favor of pedestrian bridge, and so I just want to make sure that the public understands that this feasibility study is to get some figures in front of us, some ideas, because we did, as a council, several meetings ago, passed that we wanted to pursue a service agreement for a pedestrian bridge. But this feasibility study then is still another point where we have an opportunity to evaluate what you're giving us, to see where we go from there. So I just want to make that, I just want to make that clear to those citizens, at least who have contacted me and everybody else, I guess, who might be interested in that, that this is not, you know, a final decision on anything necessarily, but we do have an obligation to, at least I feel, as a council, we have an obligation to look into it further, given our previous vote. And then I have a question, too. How, and I don't know if it's for you, Casey, or for Mike.
Okay, I'm sorry.
What the, how does this bridge compare potentially in cost, or just in general terms, to the pedestrian bridge that was also part of our larger 11 or 14, or however many options those were in that first round a couple of years ago when we were looking at that?
Well, if I recall correctly, VJ Engineering had a couple of pedestrian bridge options, and I think they were at, I want to say right around a million dollars on like a concrete beam bridge, but on a pedestrian truss bridge, I think the range was 1.4 to 1.7 million.
That's correct. And how does that, I guess I was always a little bit confused by that because I understood in those presentations that the weight-bearing capacity had to be virtually the same as for vehicular, and so I guess there was a time at least where I was assuming that there wasn't a huge difference in cost between a pedestrian bridge and a vehicular bridge.
That was, going with a pedestrian truss bridge was, I think, 1.7 million, but then doing a brand-new vehicle bridge with pedestrian accommodations was 3.2, minus the million dollars in federal funding, took it down to 2.2 million versus the 1.7 for a pedestrian-only truss.
That's helpful. And right now, we have an estimate so far, a loose one, before this feasibility study of 1.2, correct?
That I'm not sure of.
Did somebody throw that out there?
I had unofficial, you know, for the truss bridge, an unofficial cost estimate from Minola Construction that was right around a million dollars.
Okay, but that's yours, and that's not city staff or any engineers or anything like that? Yeah, okay. That's your conversations with them?
With the engineers from Minola Construction.
Right.
And the difference there, yours is naturally going to be a little bit less because the numbers that like Mike has thrown out and that were in the VJ report and in our previous reports include all of the front-end engineering services and back-end construction services.
The fully loaded cost.
Exactly, yep. So you're, I think, I believe what Minola was giving you is bare construction, so it's going to be...
That's their cost.
Yep, exactly, exactly.
Okay. Thanks, that's helpful to me.
Does this include anything in terms of the permitting that we have to do with the core and with DNR?
So this right here does not have anything to do with it. If you look at the next agenda item, I don't know if I'm jumping ahead, we had talked last time about running things parallel to move this as quickly as you desire. We split it into a separate item so that it wasn't, it could be decided on later, you wouldn't, you know, have to decide that tonight. But survey would be the first step in that permitting, that we would go out and get the additional survey that we need, because back when we did the survey for the repair, we only took what we needed, we didn't go out and do extra, we didn't take channel cross-sections because we didn't need them to model for hydraulic permitting for a repair, but now we'll need to for a new bridge. And so that second item would be the first step in that, and then the permitting process, the hydraulic design, would start with final design contracts on the September meeting that we have down on there, so...
Okay. I guess the next one.
More discussion?
Maybe just a point of clarification on my part because of conversation that's transpired concerning the last time around here. A pedestrian-only bridge is not my first choice, and I think I've been pretty straightforward on that. It is important for me to have us land on a 12-foot wide where we can get some vehicles along or across it. So just setting expectations here, if I vote to support this tonight, I don't want that to be construed that I'm 100% supporting a pedestrian bridge, so just removing any doubt there. I think it's important since the council did have a majority that wanted to move forward and investigate this to support that, but again, I will be looking for certain things in the end of it to sway my final opinion.
Thank you, Dan.
I think I've, I mean, personally, I've gotten a lot of support primarily for moving something, making a decision. And, you know, we, I don't know if we're, I lost track, if we're two years or three years now, we made a decision and that stopped, so I, we have to make forward progress, and I see this as forward progress, and I appreciate that. So, and I don't, I guess I don't want to, I don't want to slow, slow down progress, so I appreciate the work you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Other discussion? We had some public input under the public comments. Anybody has any other public comments, anything that's not been said that needs to be said? Roll call vote, please.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Russnichak?
Yes.
Cher?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
Lampy?
Yes.
Resolution 17-86 is unanimously approved. Regular business item number two is to allow WHKS to do survey work for a possible Third Street Bridge, Third Street Pedestrian Bridge. Let's go directly to a motion.
Move Resolution 1787, Resolution approving supplemental agreement number one to professional services agreement with WHKS and Company of Mason City for the Third Street Southeast Pedestrian Bridge for an estimated fee of $8,800.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion seconded. City Minister, for the public, what exactly were, is the survey involved? What's going on here?
Well, Casey just kind of ran through that briefly, that this would be the start of the survey process for the permitting. He would be looking at doing some of the hydraulic work and getting that done for the design and the riverway. Since it is a new bridge, we are required to do this versus a, you know, an older bridge that was just getting redone or repaired. So a new structure, this has to be done, this is the second piece then that would be started. It doesn't have to be done tonight, as he mentioned. If you wanted to, as he said, run it parallel, you can certainly do that, or if you wanted to decide on a bridge first and then do it, it's completely up to council.
Right. Mike wants to wait on this one, then.
There wouldn't be any difference on bridge design as far as the survey, am I right?
Yeah, the information that we would take is just to build the hydraulic model, and then whatever bridge you decide is what we'll put into the model moving forward from there, so the type of bridge doesn't impact what we would survey.
So, yeah, with any, with any kind of bridge there, we'd have to go through the same process as far as doing a survey?
Yep. The one thing would be if you would ever go down the road of roadway, right now we're thinking it's trail that we're tying in, and so there's, there might be greater limits someday of what you'd be tying into because of either elevation change or just the way that a roadway cross-section ties in versus a narrower trail cross-section. So right now, we're looking at this from a trail perspective. While we're out there, you know, we can gather more information and take a little bit more time, but we wouldn't naturally do that if we're planning for a trail bridge right now. Does that make sense?
So would the, would the, I mean, let's say, you know, just hypothetically, that there was a change in the future?
From pedestrian to two-lane.
Right. Then would this, would this work be for naught, or could you use it?
The hydraulic, all the hydraulic information would still be very useful. We might, again, need to go out and gather a little bit more information at the street intersections and things that would be tying in.
But you would still be using the same...
But we would still use all of this information for that, it just might be another day or two gathering other information down the road if, for some reason, you would go to two-lane. So I just want to throw that out there, that that's a caveat, that this isn't, you know, full survey for every bridge type in that sense.
And I thought, I thought you did some hydraulic work for the repair option already that then did not come to be, but...
We had to, there was a permanent process, but it's not a full hydraulic model that shows how the flood flows are impacted by the different structure, because we weren't actually changing any of the cross-sections, we weren't reducing any of the elevations that can currently block the river. We were just replacing in kind. The permitting was just through the DNR to show that we're replacing in kind, there's no impact to the floods. So there was hydraulic permitting, but there was no hydraulic design, per se.
And how long, let's say you were to do this now, how long are those statistics, and how long is that model good?
Good. It should not change unless there would be some major change to the river channel that, you know, that would require flood, the LOMAR, the letter of map revision that was done for Dry Run Creek, a project of that scale that would have to change the base characteristics of the river are the only way that this would be different down the road, which I wouldn't foresee happening.
Thanks.
Any of this be leveraged for the Seventh Avenue project where we're looking at different options there? And again, are we keeping that in mind as you do the modeling of that we would go forward if either a dike or raising that, does that have any impact?
Might be a better question for Mike.
So our other engineering firm, they're going to go out and do survey work and do similar hydraulic modeling, doing a cross-section of the river, extending all the way across Seventh Avenue, so that, as it was brought up earlier, if you raise Seventh Avenue and it, water's no longer allowed to overtop it, how does that impact the elevation of the river? If that were to show an adverse impact on the river, maybe it goes up an inch. We know that the Third Street Bridge creates upwards of a foot of backwater, and so with the pedestrian bridge being raised, we would also be able to, through your modeling of the Cedar River, I think, show what that impact would be in raising, removing the obstruction, and then making sure that the pedestrian bridge was above those flow elevations and did not create an obstruction. There's, I got to think, a benefit to removing the existing truss bridge and, you know, making sure that a new pedestrian bridge would have no adverse impact on it.
Yeah, we'd have to, Mike's exactly right, we'd have to meet current design standards, which the existing bridge does not. Right now, the bridge is within the 50-year flood elevation, which is not allowed, we would have to raise it up out of there and make sure it's not creating adverse backwater, as he mentioned. So I wasn't sure at what stage the Seventh Avenue was at, so I didn't want to speak to it, but, yeah, they could be looked at in conjunction.
These two projects are kind of working in parallel with each other, and I think we were, I think, looking at the August study session to have some initial findings on the Seventh Avenue. That's going to be a little bit behind what the work Casey's performing, but we've tried to accommodate, council's wishes to accelerate the Ped Bridge without consideration to the Seventh Avenue project.
I would, I personally, and I've also heard it from a couple of citizens, but I agree with it wholeheartedly, that we should be looking at these things together from the beginning, and perhaps even add a third component, which is the Cedar River Parkway, that we look at all three of those combined to determine what is best in each place to work together holistically, comprehensively.
In regards to the Parkway, the hydraulic modeling was done, so that was done in 2011, and there was determined that there was no adverse impact with, or the length and magnitude of the bridge was sized so that there would be no adverse impact. So that work has been, already been done.
On the water, but not on traffic flow necessarily.
As far as...
As far as vehicular versus pedestrian crossing at Third, plus, plus what we have on Cedar River Parkway. So I'm just saying, I think there is, and I understand, I also get some feedback, like Dave has, from some folks about, we just need to make a decision, and I agree with that, but I also think we have to make the right decision, and that's more important than making just any decision. And so, you know, I think the more we can be comprehensive in our view of this, both for hydraulics... for hydraulics as well as for transportation, that would make the most sense. And there seemed to be three key pieces to that. And in relation to that, Mike, I have to ask you too, I've, you know, I've never quite understood, you know, you gave us that wonderful presentation about the barricades and I think I asked this a little bit at the last meeting, but now we're on a completely different plan for Seventh Street. And I don't fully understand what's changed in the meantime, because that sounded like a good, good plan at that, when, when you first presented it to us, the barricade option and not, and, and isn't as dramatic, I guess, in a way, in terms of a, a change, right? Can you help me understand that better?
I think you're referring to like the HESCO barriers?
Yes, exactly, barriers, not barricades. Yeah.
Well, well, as we saw in May of two thousand thirteen, during that type of a flood event, they would end up being overtopped and, and so Seventh Avenue has a dip in it at that location. There's some intakes and, and so the, the idea is, is that from east to west, it would, it would still drain from east to west towards First Street, but that dip would be removed and, and the elevation of the roadway would end up being higher than the HESCO barriers were at the low spot. We, we feel that Seventh Avenue can be raised sufficiently to continue to provide access during the event we had last September or May of thirteen or the two events we had in nineteen ninety-three.
And when you presented the, the HESCO barriers, uh, uh, plan or proposal to us or idea, wasn't that after two thousand thirteen?
No, we, we, we actually had them, had that plan in place.
Oh, okay.
Prior to thirteen, we installed them and the, the water, the elevation, the water will start to backflow from east to west, from the main lift station through Crestwood Park and equalize to about two-foot elevation difference. So the concern is, is that even if you could build that HESCO barrier wall higher, higher and higher, the water's still gonna come back through the park, overtop Seventh Avenue and equalize to within two feet of the elevation on the north side of the barricade. So again, that is the reason why we're now looking at, at simply raising the roadway.
Yeah. And, and that was not, I mean, and again, I'm not trying to be critical, I'm just trying to understand, but that was not something that was considered then? When, when you, you know, I, I'm just trying to understand how, how we shifted. Was there new information?
I think what you might be thinking of is we talked about maybe an earthen wall at one time, a very small wall through that area instead of HESCO barriers, more of a permanent structure.
Correct.
We talked about that after the last flood event as a possibility to getting started.
Of thirteen, but, but again, it would still backflow through the park and overtop Seventh Avenue and close it down again.
And, and it makes sense to me now when you explain it. I'm just, I, I'm just trying to understand why that was proposed as a solution at that point in time and now we're to the seventh, raising Seventh Street. You know, how, how that, how that line of change of thinking happened. I mean, it sounds like a better solution. I'm just not understanding why we didn't talk about that to begin with, I guess.
Think the events are coming more often.
Okay, all right.
Wonderful discussion. Thank you, Casey, for all you bring to the table. Public input on this? Roll call vote.
Resnick?
Yes.
Share?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
Lampy?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Resolution seventeen dash eighty-seven is unanimously approved. Regular business item number three is to set a public hearing to amend our Waverly United Urban Renewal Plan. City administrator, these of course spring from our comprehensive land use plan done with InterCog and this is implementation of the, these suggestions, but for the public here, we're subtracting lands, we're adding lands and we're adding projects. First, what's the hearing date we're looking at? What's our target?
August seventh would be the date of the hearing that you'd set with this action.
Okay.
And we have discussed multiple times the projects we would put in and take out, whether it be adding CMI or the Red Fox, removing others. And so this is the actual accumulation of all that into a hearing, so this can then be finalized.
Good. Motion, please.
Move resolutions seventeen eighty-eight, resolution setting date for a consultation and public hearing on opposed amendment number two to the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Plan in the city of Waverly, state of Iowa.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion second, council discussion. Public input. Roll call vote.
Resnick?
Yes.
Share?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
Lampy?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Resolution seventeen dash eighty-eight is unanimously approved. Regular business item number four is also a public hearing date setting, this time for properties if needed for the Parkway East project. A motion, please.
Move resolution seventeen eighty-nine, resolution setting a date for public hearing on the intent to acquire or condemn if necessary all or a portion of property or an interest in property for the public improvement for the Cedar River Parkway East improvements project for August twenty-first, twenty-seventeen at seven PM in the council chambers of city hall.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion seconded, council discussion.
This is just the initial step in kinda letting people know where we're looking at putting the Parkway and therefore what the land parcels we're gonna be looking at wanting to acquire for that.
Right. It'll be the visibility for everybody to see the right of way we're looking to acquire, what it's gonna look like. I assume the path all the way through will be listed out and then this is that first step to get to that public hearing and then to acquire and as, as necessary and or condemn if, if we have to to move forward this project through that corridor.
And the landowners have had at least two opportunities to see this, so it shouldn't be a surprise to those that are affected by it.
Yeah, there's been a couple of public meetings on it. All the landowners have been invited. There should not be any surprise to any of this.
Other thoughts? Public input? Roll call vote.
Share?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
Lampy?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Resolution seventeen dash eighty-nine unanimously approved. Regular business item number five is to dedicate a seventeen-foot strip of land fronting onto Twentieth Street Northwest owned by Echo Development for the purpose of future roadway improvements and utility installations, sitting at no cost here, correct? This is all just, so motion, please.
I move resolution seventeen dash ninety, resolution approving dedication of land to the city of Waverly adjacent to partial, parcels J and K for public road purposes on Twentieth Street Northwest.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion second, council discussion. Public input? Roll call vote.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
Lampy?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Resnick?
Yes.
Share?
Yes.
Resolution seventeen dash ninety unanimously approved. Regular business item number six is to complete this year's PED ramp work in District Seven. Motion, please.
Move resolution seventeen ninety-one, resolution accepting the citywide pedestrian ramp construction two thousand seventeen project as complete and approving change order number one for the final adjustment of quantities in the amount of eight thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars and eighty cents and final pay request in the amount of seven thousand three hundred twenty-six dollars and four cents to Midwest Concrete of Piazza, Iowa.
Second, please.
Second.
Public input? Roll call vote.
Angus?
Yes.
Lampy?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Resnick?
Yes.
Share?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Resolution seventeen dash ninety-one unanimously approved. Regular business item number seven is to do contract on the First Street Southeast Water Main Extension to the old Cuna Building. We've had a lot of water over the dam on this one, so to speak. Form a motion.
I'll move resolution seventeen ninety-two, resolution approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance from Denver Underground and grading for the First Street Southeast Water Main Extension two thousand seventeen project and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract.
Second, please.
Second.
Public input?
Just a quick question, I think, kind of a PSA-type announcement went out today that advising folks on what will happen on First Street once this project starts and so we've had the conversation with adjacent property owners, businesses, those type of things.
Yeah, we've been kinda keeping them up to speed. There's been a lot of interest in the timing of it, especially with the downtown construction starting to change out of downtown, but this will afford that opportunity to not completely eliminate that and then start this process through. Mike, if you wanna add?
Paul Stevens is also helping with that effort, cause she's already got connections and familiarity with the property owners and has agreed to help support us.
Construction time, Mike?
Starts tomorrow. Four weeks.
For the public, please note, this one's short. Relatively. Roll call vote, please.
Lampy?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Resnick?
Yes.
Share?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
Resolution seventeen dash ninety-two is unanimously approved. Regular business item number eight is to cancel the July study session. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval to cancel the July twenty-fourth study session.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion second, council discussion.
Is this something that can be used to help move the bridge project along?
I don't think we need a study session, right?
WHKS would have agreed to accelerate it that far. I'm not sure what else we could do until you get their information too. Not sure what they're gonna be able to bring. They're gonna bring it in August for it. I know, I, Mike?
I don't know.
I hate busy work. I always have. Probably I didn't do some of my homework in high school, but at the same time, I, I just know that there's lots of things that we can discuss that come up, that can be discussed. It's just like, almost feel like there's something that could be done. I know tonight during Board of Adjustment earlier, there was a question came up about council policy on driveways and commercial lots and some, there was a very interesting question for having to pave commercial lots because everywhere else around him was unpaved, but because he was going to build another building exactly like what he had there, he was gonna have to pave his entire lot. And it was gonna be like a separate lot of paved, an island with a whole bunch of unpaved areas. So things like that, that are, are not necessarily like, you know, high intensity discussion, but at the same time, they impact those businesses in terms of, you know, what is our policy in terms of, we have an ordinance that says lots need to be paved when new construction is done. So how are we approaching that and how, what's, what's the direction that staff has so that when they're caught in these situations, they're not necessarily kind of having to either wing it or try to, try to direct them to, say, a Board of Adjustment appeal, which costs the property owner to, to do the appeal. I know we've had discussions in terms of planning and zoning and zoning ordinances and things like that, that maybe we could take a study session sometime. Again, I don't know in two weeks if we're gonna have enough time to put anything in there that's gonna be really meaningful at this point, but those are, I guess, are what I see the study session to really for. Occasionally, we have some, you know, time-sensitive stuff that we need to deal with, but then there's also opportunities that we have to have a broader discussion and it would be nice to use that at times.
I think we use it all the time and I, I think when this first came up as a motion, it was because we kind of scanned what there might be and there didn't seem to be any larger issues. I mean, maybe the ones you were talking about, Tim, I'm still not clear in my mind exactly what you're saying the topic would be on either of the ones that you brought up in terms of a broader policy, kind of what do we really need to be talking about?
More some general policy type things that the staff might have.
Well, we asked this, I think, when, when Dan and I suggested that we take one month at a time in, in July to see whether we have anything, in part, you know, because there didn't appear to be anything and we also had such poor attendance at the study sessions in the past, there didn't, at least at that time, there didn't, no one piped up in, on staff or, or on council and said there were topics. I'm, I'm generally for study sessions, but I also understood where the motion came from.
That's why I said, I don't want it to be something that's just busy work with the staff to throw something out there that we, you know, come in and chew on for forty minutes and go home.
Do we, do we have a seventeenth heavy agenda? If we had anything that was really pressing, could we move to a study session item to the seventeenth?
Yeah, we can have discussion items on the seventeenth. It's a very, very light, very light agenda right now. And we've talked about adding some of those in lieu of a full-blown study session for, as you said, thirty minutes and then we're out. So we are looking at that possibility for the seventeenth because it is so light. It's just a matter of this time of year, we don't have as much to jump into. You know, we have commissioned updates, things of that, and they usually have their set months when they come to do that. We can accelerate some of those, but this time of year, they have difficulty getting together and bringing updates to us as well, so.
You guys are on vacation and stuff too.
Exactly.
I didn't wanna, I guess I didn't mean to, that we needed to have a meeting. I was just asking about the, the bridge topic, but I understand you guys are probably, hopefully taking vacations and stuff.
Yeah, I think so.
Exactly, but I mean, it's just the bridge.
Some of us are and it's a good.
Well, no, and again, that's, that's kind of going month to month is a much better way.
Okay.
When kind of first, kind of talked about, well, we'll just do June, July and August. And it was like, let's, let's not do all of those.
Well, in August, we have a topic study session. That is when you will see the bridge material come back. So August, we do have lockdown.
And again, I don't know that we have anything that's really ready right now or even in two weeks would be ready to have for a discussion for us. I just know we, we, there are plenty of things out there that kind of crop their head up every now and then and it's just kind of like, could we address them? You know, have an idea of that. I mean, we haven't had a strategic planning session for a while either, so there's another thought process, opportunity there might be better closer towards budgeting time.
Absolutely. And we're discussing that in the staff meetings as well. When do we wanna lay out some of these larger items? We just kinda came up empty in July with updates, et cetera, and so that's why it was.
Again, my intent of originally putting this on here is that summers are traditionally slower from topics, but very busy for staff. And when we're accelerating things like the, the pedestrian bridge project, an overwhelming project like the Bremer Avenue, I know staff time is, is very short to put together meaningful information too. So I, again, just wanted to have it out there in front of us to make sure that it is using the resources to the best that we can and factoring in everything with vacations and workload and all of that, so.
And part of that was I told Pete that I would bring that up, cause that was a question that came up tonight for something to look at, so.
All in favor signify with yes.
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 Close with no. Cancelled. We have a historic preservation commission minutes from April twenty-fourth. Any comments officially received? Library board minutes, May ninth, officially received? Golf commission minutes from June thirteenth, comments officially received? Leisure services commission minutes, June fifteenth, comments officially received? Senior calendar for July officially received? Staff comments?
I think we have just a few, sir, and then I have one at the end as well. If you wanna go ahead, Carla.
Jill from Wharburg College contacted our office today and just wanted everyone to know that Thursday afternoon, they are going to be shooting a drone video of certain places in Waverly. in Waverly as part of a marketing campaign for Warburg College. So they're going to concentrate on places along the river, and then other places would include like Prairie Links Golf Course and the Waverly Golf Course, the Health Center, Cedar Lane Road, Cuna, Nestle, Middle School, things like that. He has contacted the airport, waiting for a callback, because I was like, well, it's kind of crop dusting time. I don't want you guys to be colliding, causing an accident. They do have the proper FAA permits. And he did tell me that while these videos would not be a cost to any of the people they were videotaping, he said that they could possibly be something they would share with those businesses and places. So, just so you know, that'll be Thursday afternoon, and if somebody mentions something about it, that's what's happening.
So would Wardbrig like us to go to one of those locations and wave when the drone comes over?
Spell out Waverly or something with the all of you.
Chasing them around like one of the Google cars?
Well, I'll just say, I mean, Waverly is a real, is a real drawing, you know, point, you know, attraction for our students and at Warburg. And so we want to try to highlight that a bit more perhaps than we have in the past, so.
That's good to hear, because I agree. I agree. I think it's a great draw, and we are getting this reputation. We might as well take advantage of it for our college. Other staff comments?
Would, sir, I'd like to at least allow my comments. For the gentlemen that have sat through the whole meeting, I think they probably wanted to say something earlier. My mistake for not catching them at that time, but if you would allow them to speak very briefly, I would appreciate it, sir.
New business?
How y'all doing tonight?
Good, thank you.
Fantastic. This is my first city council meeting ever, so I appreciate you bearing with me. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name's Jesse Armstrong. This is Sean Williams. He's my business partner. And we have acquired the old Feining Goat and have a new brand and concept that we're putting in there. We're really excited. We're in the middle of a remodel right now, and I know that our fate is in your hands this evening on our liquor license. So I just wanted to say a few words. We wanted to just be here and available for you if you had any questions for us. And we wanted to let you know that, you know, we intend on being parts of this community, not just some people from out of town that have parked a business here and, you know, expect to make a buck off of folks in this community. We currently don't live here yet, but we've been in discussions with our fiancés about getting us moved up here as soon as possible. And I have some just little mockups here of just our general brand and theme concepts. If I can pass these around, and y'all can peruse those at your leisure. Just if there are questions when you're talking to your constituents around town, if, you know, you'll at least have some general themes that you can answer their questions with.
So if things go as you hope, when do you expect to be open for business?
Our target date is August twenty-eighth, right? As the kids are coming back to school and the fall ramping up, that's the best time to open a new place, so.
I've got to ask, how did you come up with the name?
Nice question.
When I first heard it, I was like, that's pretty unique.
Your little packets there will definitely clue you into how we came across that. The Sasquatch was an idea his. There's a lot of people in the country that tend to be drawn to things like that and to a Sasquatch. And nobody else in the country has a name like this, so it is our own brand, and we've trademarked it and whatnot. The Jack part of it, my grandfather passed away in two thousand and thirteen. His name was Jack, and that inheritance money is where I got my seed money to do this. So that would be the Jack's part of it. And plus, Jack will be our mascot, you know. He's got a friend who's currently working on a seven-foot log, and he's going to chainsaw carve into a Sasquatch, and that'll be kind of a centerpiece in there. And there's a lot of brand incorporation you can do into the menu with, you know, funny naming and all the, the whole lexicon of mythical creatures and things like that. So we just thought it was something that stuck out and that definitely piques your interest.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Definitely, people have been talking about it around?
I've heard quite a buzz. I have. I've heard just as much of a buzz of people who can't pronounce the name just yet, but we're hoping that in time, everybody will get that hammered out.
A lot of excitement. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the business, yeah.
I wanted to ask...
Otherwise it would be Jax.
I wanted to ask you guys if there would be a discount for somebody who shows up with a beard?
Absolutely. City Council comments?
Tab Ray may have had a comment, too, sir.
Mr. Tab Ray.
Sorry, tonight, we are not broadcasting on the cable. We are broadcasting via the Internet. There was some technical difficulty. I don't know what it was, and we're working on it. So you can watch us whenever you want to on YouTube. Right now, we're working on getting a broadcast on, a rebroadcast on the PEG channel.
Okay, thank you.
The only comment I want to make, and I'm sure we'll be revisiting it as we talked about before, but I do want to recognize the many citizens I've heard from about concerns about fireworks, yeah.
Mr. Dan? Mr. David?
Just maybe, can we clarify, I guess, Mr. Miller's concern about if we have, if somebody has a question about Highway Bremer Avenue? Can they come to the city? I mean, obviously this, okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
And the city owns this, and...
We are a partner in it. We are paying a portion of it, depending on how you look at the project. DOT is the driver.
Sure.
First and foremost, we are being allocated from DOT our share.
Yeah, okay.
They went to the right people. Paul Stevenson has been a great contact, and the gentleman he was referring to is with the DOT itself. So I'm not sure what happened or what transpired, but we will look into it.
Yeah, what he's explaining, sounds like it didn't happen or didn't work out at all, so.
It's a communication thing a lot of times, and we'll make sure and dig into it and get to the bottom of it. You bet.
Yes, that was, if I could skip ahead, kind of stay on that topic. I see so much of the trenching and stuff that I'm assuming is Mid-America putting in new gas lines, that type of thing. Are they actually part of the Highway Three project? And I'm wondering if Miller's situation was Mid-American digging holes there, and...
They're not part of our project, from what I understand.
They were in their place earlier and then now.
Yes and no. They have, they're legally obligated to get their infrastructure out of the way if it needs to be moved. They're there by permission of the DOT. So oftentimes in situations like this, they have to move their infrastructure or change their infrastructure to accommodate the roadway reconstruction. Oftentimes, Mid-American Gas or other utilities may take this opportunity to replace or upgrade their utilities as well, because obviously then they don't have pavement replacement costs. So a little bit of both is going on. We also, timing-wise, was such that Mid-American Gas was doing scheduled gas main replacement in southeast and southwest Waverly. So we ended up with kind of a perfect storm, and that storm will continue for probably the next year.
I just noticed that they may not be as diligent as going back and reseeding that type of thing as other contractors have been, and it may be because of the pace they're having to go through right now, but...
And some of it, that area will be disturbed again. So I know Mid-American Gas is doing significant upgrades and replacement of their system. They're also having to, I think a lot of the work right now is taking place up by the railroad tracks in that vicinity. So it, fortunately, it takes significant time to do some of this work.
Just wondered if that was part of the disconnect with the Millers that...
We'll find out. We'll get to the bottom of it.
Yeah, we don't, I guess, yeah.
Mayor, thanks for letting me jump in there. I appreciate it.
No problem.
I guess, and then the, I've noticed Bremer Avenue is open. Is that going to stay open until maybe, maybe this is on Facebook or something? I, is that...
It'll stay as it is until probably August, and then they'll start the final phase, probably mid-August. They're hoping that final west side's done.
Yeah.
I feel like I should just run up and down Main Street for a while.
Get all you can and what you can. Well, the way, unfortunately, a lot of the way this is going to play out is, like the traffic signals at First Street East, First Street West are going to be, come online and activate it right about the time that they, in August, shut down that stretch from First Street all the way up to the OP. And I'm going to tell you, I, if you think this was bad, it's going to get worse. It will get worse when they do that next stretch.
Back to Fourth Street in there, and that's a challenge itself for trying to work through how it's going to be.
So, we're going to...
Be all the way from there to OP?
Yeah, the, what's known as stage four, the traffic gets funneled, funneled into the middle. So they'll be working on both the north side and south side parking lane areas. And once you get in that corridor for a nine, ten-block stretch, you cannot get on or off of that corridor. So July twenty-sixth, we're doing a business invite to all the adjoining property owners, as well as the press will be invited, too. That's in anticipation that probably the first week in August, that section of the work is going to start, and it will probably run up until Thanksgiving time.
Then we'll stop for a little while and kick back into the spring, let it snow for a bit, and come back in the spring, finish up.
Aren't you glad you stayed for the meeting? Yeah. Any more, David?
No.
Tim?
Kind of piggybacking on Edie's question on the fireworks, I guess I would wonder if it's possible, I mean, I, to me, that seems like a good study session thing down the line. But if it's possible, if Rich even would have information on like the number of calls that they had this year versus if they've got historical numbers from previous years on the same thing, and any, anything like that. I know I've seen Waterloo was talking, they had eighty-five.
Compared to last year, I don't have the numbers from last year, but nearly you called us. So we looked up what our calls were this year. So it became legal June first, and as of Friday morning, the, we had about forty-four to forty-eight calls for service, and eleven of those were for the after-hours calls. Now, we understand also that there was a lot more activity after hours than what people actually called. But as far as injuries and damages, there was, none reported us for those items.
A little over a call a day is about what we figured on average roughly, the time period, considering our size, and some of the other cities were not that far out.
The other one, I wanted just to kind of make a statement on reaffirming that, you know, as council members, we are each individual part of the whole, and that really the only people in the city that are authorized really to speak for the city would be the chief executive, who is the mayor, also certainly is our head of state, not quite, speaking of, you know, he's essentially in that office. And then James, as a city administrator, has the authority to speak on behalf of the city. Anyone else for speaking, we're speaking on our own, in our own terms. We need to be careful to make sure that we do that as, as council members as part of the group as opposed to individually taking positions or trying to state the position of the people as such. Just wanted to...
Good point. Mike?
I want to thank the gentleman from Sasquatch for showing up. Your institution's going to be in my ward, and I'm always glad to see an abandoned or an empty facility repurposed. So that looks good. I have a question for Mike. As far as we know, as long as we don't have earthquakes or tornadoes, what's a realistic timeframe for reopening West Bremer from Twentieth to, say, the library or Casey's?
August first.
Thank you.
Why are you smiling?
That's pretty quick, right? I'm looking forward to that, yes.
Dan?
I asked my question earlier, but I guess, Tab, is there any room in the pool with the heat these past few days, or?
Last week, we had our biggest crowd. It was just short of five hundred. Today was okay crowd. It was very manageable. But yeah, we've had some good crowds lately.
Always good to hear laughter.
Yeah, that's five hundred people on a single day.
Really good.
Great asset to have this time of year in this kind of weather.
We want to say publicly what the council has said privately and many of the citizens, that we are giving our condolences to Carla, who lost her mother recently, and so our arms are around you, Carla. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Second. All in favor, signify with yes.
Yes.
Adjourned.